All right, there we go. This is our regular meeting, Board of Finance, Thursday, August 19th, 6:00 P. M. We are doing hybrid this week. I'm going to run through attendance. Vice Chair John Mossepsky here. Greg Bino.
Bano present.
Sorry about that. Steve Kirsch.
Here.
Great, Dane Kristapski.
Here.
And Rebecca O'Donnell.
Here.
And Mike.
We have Joe Cobza. One correction for the recording. It's September 23rd, not August.
Oh, Jesus, I'm looking at the old one. Thank you. I'm looking at the old voting record. Thank you very much, September 23rd. Thanks, good catch. No one else probably noticed, that's the best part. So I'm going to confirm we have a quorum. Please note this being, the meeting is being conducted using electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21.1. As such, the meeting is being recorded, will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you were attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphones unless you are speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title without a quote-unquote at the outset of education that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body or participating remotely should be taken by roll call or let's vote unanimously. That feature will not be utilized or considered during this meeting. Okay. We also have Ron Bonavsky with us tonight.
Here.
Yep.
Heidi Mead.
Here.
Ted Kellogg.
Here.
Joe Cobza. And Donna Lee. No Donna yet? All right. So we're going to start with the approval of the meeting minutes and voting record for August 19th.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the meeting minutes and voting record for August 19th, 2021.
Do we have a second?
Thank you, Colonel Beal, second.
Great, discussions, anything, then just get fixed. I know, Greg, you said you were in person and it was noted as from both.
Yes, that's correct. I was here.
Can we just get that corrected? Anybody have anything else? All right, hearing nothing. John?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Rebecca?
Hi.
And myself, hi. All right, first elect, then you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not have anything to report for this evening.
Oh, that's nice. We might actually make the football game today. All right, public participation. Anyone from the public?
Remember to unmute yourself first if you are remote.
All right, last call for public. All right, hearing none, going to move on. We're rolling. Uh, unfinished business, we do have the three-year model still on here. We are going to address this coming forward. So once we put this, last year's budget to sleep, I am going to put this up the next time we go, just to see if we can get some action going on this over the next few months before we get into regular budget season, just to at least plan it in. Not having anything else, let's roll into new business. Review of the 21 general fund budget report. Ron, you want to talk us through?
Yeah, so if you turn to page two on the year-to-date budget report, actually pages one and two just give you a complete summary of the fiscal year 21 activity. I do want to point out the actual surplus is off a couple hundred dollars. We were having a muted glitch, which has since been corrected, but we're showing an overall surplus before any transfers of $1,779,000. And that's revenue net, you know, of revenue net expenses. So I don't know if anyone's got any questions on that.
Yes, Ron, I do.
Sure.
Mike, Steve Kirsch, one question. Can you address the $50,893 in encumbrances under the town attorney?
Yeah, so that was just a late bill that came in for all activity dated June 30th and prior.
So that's a bill we have in hand?
We do have it in hand.
Okay.
Perfect, good question. Anyone have anything else? All right, hearing nothing, we're going to move on to the question of the book.
Mike, excuse me, I thought Ron wanted to say more. I have a couple other questions on the detail.
Go ahead, you're on.
On the detail pages. They're all basically the same question. So let me, let me ask them all and you can try to address them as one issue. I noticed that on page one, under the, I'm sorry, under account 0120, finance, $52,000 underspent on salary. The library account, 0800, $53,000 underspent on salary. Parks and Rec salary in 810, $87K roughly underspent. And so those are all salary lines on the HR insurance, $280,000 underspent. So my question is, number one, take the insurance and why did we miss it by so much? And then for the salaries, is there, was there something going on that salaries throughout the town were off?
So, so finance is an easy one. Part of my salary was allocated over.
Okay.
Okay, so there's going to be some savings there on the municipal side. And I'll have to ask you, you know, as far as insurance goes, when we built the budget, we built it at, got him going back, probably used a 10% increase at the time. And I'm not sure when, when, and this is the fiscal year 21 budget, which would have been finalized in May of '20. We may not, you know.
I don't think we had a final.
We may not have had a final number at that point. So on a percentage basis, what do you, what was our, we always build in continuous.
It was like 8%, I think we missed it by 8%. I didn't write it down, but.
There are also open positions.
Yeah.
8% was my memory too.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, if that's all it was, you know, we're always dealing with imprecise numbers, but I just wanted to confirm that that's what it was.
Yeah. We had open, particularly in TD, and they had open positions, which is going to drive a lot of that.
And then all the salaries were.
I think some, there's probably a mix there in terms of open, like I know Parks and Rec had a personnel change that created an opening for a period of time. Library, I mean, if it was part-time salaries, that would have been.
Yes, it was.
A lot of that could have been driven by reduced hours due to COVID. We didn't have the hours, we didn't, you know. There were a lot of people that were still employed and could do work from home and things like that. There were another collection of people that, you know, there just were no hours for, again, these were some of the part-time people.
Okay, so for this year, are we, I've heard that we've lost a number of people over the course of the last, some number of months. My question is, are we, are we expecting the same kind of miss this year? Or we think we're going to be more accurate?
In insurance?
No, in salaries. In staff and salaries.
Well, and there's a couple things, because when you have someone roll, you know, roll off, you're also paying out their vacation time, right? So depending on when the position gets filled.
There's a lot of moving parts. Yeah, I mean, there's been, there's been turnover, you know, we've had more, you know, there are a lot of employees that are of retirement age, and so we've had a collection that have done that. We've had actually a lot of people deciding to move out of state. So we had a lot of departures, people moving out of state. So between those, those are really the two biggest drivers that we've seen. So yeah, there's, but, you know, to Ron said, to Ron's point, a lot of those folks that have been here for a while do have a payout. So that has to be, that has to be covered. We'd have to do a more detailed analysis where we are currently. I know there's no, you know, we don't have any, certainly any risks that I'm aware of in terms of going over due to payouts or other things. We always look at that, make sure it's covered. In terms of upside, it's possible, but I think we'd have to take a closer look, right?
Right.
The pattern sort of just jumped out at me, you know, and I could understand if there was one department or something, it just seemed to be that across the board, we seem, again, we can't, we can't predict when somebody's going to up and leave.
Right.
Okay.
And there's always moving parts of when you bring on a new person, are they, you know, are they union or they're non-union, where are they going to come on in a pay scale and all other stuff? So. So there could always be upside if you end up bringing someone on for a lower, a lower rate.
Okay.
And obviously the changeover will impact insurance. You may have someone come on, you know, come in as a single and maybe the person who left was family, you know.
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. All right, anybody have anything else before we move to the Board of Ed? All right. So in your packet is a letter that I received, September 21st, from Donna Lee, Board of Ed. She was going to join us, I don't know if she did make it.
Yes, Mike, I'm here.
Terrific, thank you for joining us. So I think everybody's read the letter. Basically, I had some specific questions and a couple issues I'm going to bring up. And then we can discuss it further. So basically, I'm going to give a little history for the people who are relatively new to the board, because 10-248A was originally created a number of years ago, and something we've used fairly regularly where when we had surpluses, it was originally intent was a capital account. So basically, if we had excess, we would put it in there a year. And so the Board of Ed would have kind of extra funds for unforeseen expenses, specifically capital, you know, if a boiler went during the middle of the year or a roof had an issue, we would have funds available without having to tap the regular budget. It worked great for a number of years, we often did this. The law has been changed, and now where before it would need to come back to finance for approvals and a little back and forth discussion. And it was capital-based, now it's basically open for any education expense. So it's now almost exactly like the budget, where once we give a number over there, we are checked out of the decision. So just a little background on that and where we see it. I did want to discuss the amounts, because again, at first read, it looks like we're just trying to do the maximum amount possible. And there's not a lot of backup to back this up. So I wanted to give Donna a chance to explain, you know, why we think 2% was needed, and then go into the details of where I have an issue.
Sure.
Donna, you want to touch on it?
Yep, so per Connecticut general statutes, we're allowed to deposit to, up to 2% of our fiscal year budget into the 10-248 account. So our total surplus was for the year, $2,013,529. So we're proposing the exact 2%, which is $1,178,038, to be placed in that account. Of that 1.1 million and change, we're specifically requesting that $420,000 of that be earmarked for the Mastic turf field carpet replacement. When we had replaced, when we had installed the turf field, I think it's like over five years ago, the carpet has about a 10-year life. Now that's give and take. It could be eight years, it could be 11 years. But at the time, which was probably five, six years ago, they had estimated that just the carpet replacement would be roughly about $400,000. Now this past year, we had to expend about $50,000 over the summer to replace the coconut husk, because we did not go with the rubber underneath, because that does break down over time, so we had to replace that. So we're asking for the 420, because per Ron, we have only saved $80,000 in the 248 account for this carpet replacement. So we feel that that brings that to a half a million dollars. So that would cover, give or take, because we don't know, you know, in five years, when the carpet has been repaired, if it is going to be more than $400,000. But also puts a cushion in there if we do need to do the underfill again, which we spent, like I said, $50,000, so that gives us a cushion there. And then the balance of the 750 is obviously just the balance of that making up for the 2%, making up for the 2%.
Okay, let me just ask, let me, let me stop you there for a second. So since you brought up the field, let's bring up the field. So when we originally agreed to pay for the field, the presentation was given that the Board of Ed would put aside the money every year, which I think was $70,000 or $80,000.
It was $40,000 a year.
I thought it was considerably more than that, but that has not been done, correct?
That has not been done, correct.
And there's a reason we didn't budget it?
Well, it was, it wasn't budgeted. We were doing that from, when we had done it, it was going to be from any of our unexpended monies. We were going to place that.
Okay, well, that was not what we agreed five years ago, because I was part of that conversation. And that was not what was discussed. What was discussed was the Board of Ed would cover that so the town didn't end up with this bill, as we were laying out a million dollars for the budget. So I would defer that, I know John was with us then, he can refresh my memory, but it was definitely discussed that they would put it away on an annual basis. Not only if it was a surplus there.
Well, and the problem is that it was, the way it was being done, and why there's $80,000 in that 10-248 account, is that it was done the first two years from the surplus, and then from then on, it hasn't been done, which is why there's only $80,000 in the 10-248 account set aside for the turf field.
Okay, well, let's, let's take a step back to the set aside part, because you can't, my understanding of 10-248A is there's no way to set aside in that fund. The money's in the fund and didn't spend for anything, according to the statute. So this is not like a regular account where you can earmark it specifically. It can be used tomorrow for anything you want, once it's in the 10-248A, is that correct?
That, I, that again, would be somebody above me for the definition of the Connecticut State's general statute on that.
That's, that's my interpretation, Mike, correct?
Yeah, that was my.
That was my interpretation as well.
Yeah, that was my understanding as well, Mike. And I, so I have a couple of questions, Donna.
Let me just finish, I want to keep going. No problem, let me just keep going with this. So that's one issue I have. The second issue I have is we're now asking for operating funds, which was never the intent of 10-248A. So basically, we're just supplanting the budget process. So now, instead of going through the normal budget process, which we just finished up, your budget just started nine or 10 weeks ago, and we had a, probably the most significant increase we've had in years on the Board of Ed's side, which was well, like around 5%, correct?
I don't remember what it was, but it was close to 5%.
Correct, and now nine weeks later, we're going to need another 2%, of which 750 is just for operating? So you're asking for another.
Our Board of, our Board of Ed, I don't, our Board of Ed's intent is not to supplant this using, as this using as operating. Our Board of Ed's intent is to put money there for capital.
It says the balance 750, 038 would be available for fiscal year 22 operations. That's your letter. I'm reading from your letter.
Yeah, but we're, we're looking at it more as capital than operations, which is why.
That's not what you wrote.
Okay, then I'll revise.
You wrote operations.
And it's to you.
I mean, again, once it goes into the 10-248A, you can do anything you want with it.
Okay.
You have operations, but the problem is.
Is never, has never been that we've used that money without asking the Board of Finance for approval.
But that was because you had to before, now you don't. That was, the law was changed. You're aware of the change in the law?
Yes, but again, our intent is never to use the money.
Okay, intent is a wonderful thing, but you're not going to be there. So I don't know what the intent of the next chairperson will be.
All right, well, that's true.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, you know, intent is wonderful when you're doing it, and I would take you at your word, but you're not going to be there. So I don't know who else is going to be there and what their intent is. So I don't think that, first of all, putting another 750 aside, when we just put in a huge increase without having any idea for what it's used for, and then you also received a huge, how much did we receive from the federal government?
We have received two sets of money from the federal government, and most of that is not being used for the intent of what that is, which is to replace learning loss. But unfortunately, we are needing to use that to actually hire new teachers because of vast increases in enrollment in the schools and having to add.
How much did we receive?
Well, we don't receive anything. We actually have to submit for reimbursement to the state for that.
And they didn't give you a number?
Yes, we have two numbers. Joe, can you say what the two numbers are in our two? It's like 500,001 and like 1.3 in the other.
So it's 1.8 million?
Yes, but we don't get that in cash.
I understand, but they do reimburse you when you spend it, right?
You apply for reimbursement, and if they approve it, then they reimburse that to us.
So you have an extra 5% increase in the regular budget. You have $1,008,000 in additional federal funding, that's an opportunity, and now you're asking for another $1,000,001.
Well, the, again, that money that we're getting from the federal government, we are using to actually hire staff because of increased enrollment from the summer. We have, we have hired.
Okay, how would I know that?
Four elementary school teachers, because Joe said that he is a, kept to a price of that. And now we're hiring a special education teacher because of increased enrollment in special education.
So how would you propose that next year's budget's going to get covered if you get a one-time grant of $1,008,000 and another 750 here? You're going to have to supplant $2.5 million next year, starting out of the gate?
The concern that we have discussed at our board meeting is because we're using that, there is going to be a cliff, and that is the concern of the board, that because we're using the federal funds that should be used for learning loss, and some, don't get me wrong, some of the funds we are using for learning loss, but that if we're using them for actual staff, then there is going to be a cliff at some point where there's, that money is going to go away, and we still need those teachers because of the, our enrollment numbers.
Well, I mean, overall, the issue I have is it seems like the only reason we're asking the 2% is because that's the most we can ask for. And I don't see a very well-structured plan on where the federal money's going, what's going to be done next year. And since we have no control moving forward, I am honestly completely against putting anything in the 10-248A at this point, because we have no idea where it's going to go. Simple as that.
Well, we actually have a full plan that we had, and on every single dollar.
Certainly not attached to this.
No, this has been the federal money. The federal money has every single dollar, what do you call, accounted for.
You didn't feel the need to share that with us?
Joe's, Joe's gonna, Joe actually is going to share a screen on that, Mike. He's got a.
Okay, well, I mean, again, we can deal with that going forward, but I am not inclined to put anything in the 10-248A, because again, we don't have any control over it. We just approved the budget nine weeks ago. So, you know, you were $2 million over budget last year, and we're nine weeks in, you don't really know where you're going to be in two or three months.
Again, that's going to be quite honestly a discussion with the new, the new board, and I guess the Board of Finance on that.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
But again.
But again, just to give a blank check doesn't make any sense to me at this point.
Okay, but you're going to have, and listen, you guys have the right to do whatever you want with the money and do, put it all in a designated fund balance. But I can tell you from my concern, which is just a concern, I'm done in two months, there's going to be a half a million dollar bill coming in five years for a turf field's replacement.
Right, we have lots of bills coming in five years that are capital improvements, and we handle them every time.
Okay.
I mean, that's not a, I mean, there's no need to do that today.
Okay.
It's five years out. We have lots of projects that are two years out, and three years out, and four years out, possibly more important than that. You know, we may have to deal with roofs or other more important buildings than the field. And we'll address the field when the field needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Because it hasn't been budgeted.
The Board of Education's commitment was that we wanted to save money so that there was not a burden on the taxpayers and that there would be money there.
But if you take the money now and not in five years, there's still a burden on the taxpayer.
Okay.
I mean, the burden doesn't change, it's the same money, you're just taking it now. When we don't know in five years what our capacity might be, we might be in a position to write a check in five years. You know, our general fund's pretty healthy, we might decide just to pay for it. We can make those decisions when the decisions come up, and that's what we do. So, you know, just deciding on your own without talking to us that you want to fund this particular project, as opposed to every other project on the list that we have in a budget, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I mean, what about all the other things on the capital list? We have a, we have a plan that we all go through. I mean, this just seems like, and run around the budget process.
Hey, Mike, can I?
Go ahead, Steve, yeah.
Yeah, I would like to, I wanted, because you went much further afield than I want. I wanted to talk about the field itself, because I have a couple of questions. I was, I've been around, I was at all those meetings. So I expected that money was going to be put away each year. And so I have two questions, Donna. If you've basically been returning some level of surplus every year, if that was the way you were putting money in, why into, into what you thought was a reserve for the field, then why wasn't that done, number one? Number two, why not take, if you were going to make an ask this year, to ask for either the shortfall year, over the year since that we should have been putting money in to today, as opposed to taking, putting away enough money to get you over the next five years? And my third question is, what are you going to do to start putting money away each year? What surprised me was that, as close as I pay attention to the Board of Ed budget, I did not realize that money was not being put away each year from some methodology for the field. So if you can sort of address those three questions, because I, I sort of share part of Mike's concern as to why do the whole 420, although I might be, we say, okay, let's do last year, let's do the three years that are short, let's do something like that. And then you all have a plan going forward to build up that, that quote-unquote amount.
So Donna, this is Ron, do you mind if I speak? A little, a little bit of the history. So the first couple of years, $40,000 was put aside each year. I want to say about three, four years back, money was needed from that fund to cover special education. So money stopped being put aside from the surplus at that time.
That's.
Okay, and it, it hasn't been put back since. It's never been budgeted from, from day one. It was always, it always came out of the surplus. Okay, so it was, and I'm going to speak my opinion, and if everyone's okay with that. This was my suggestion. I take full responsibility for this, because putting it out there, because I don't think it's that bad of an issue to bond for it in five years. Matter of fact, that would be my recommendation. But this way, let's, let's put this behind us, let's not put the money aside for it each year, and let's just bond for it when the turf field needs to be replaced. You know, why, why would we, why would we reserve? I mean, the money could be used for something else. So this way, this. So, but this way, this kind of puts it behind us. So I'll take full responsibility with my, uh.
So, so you're saying, put, put it away here so you're not bonding.
No, but, let's get it off the table. Um, the suggest, my suggestion was, was let's put it out there. You know, that was my suggestion to, uh, to Joe and Donna.
Idea out there.
Put the idea out there.
For a debate.
For, for debate, exactly. So let, let's get it off the table. I don't have a problem, the town bonding for it when the turf field needs to be replaced. Let's address it at that time.
Alright, so, so my response is, if I can put money away each year, I'd rather do that than go out and bond and put another, and, and have another bonding.
You know what? Maybe the Board of Finance's decision is at that point, hey, we've got a healthy general fund. We don't need to bond for it. We can operate the funds at that time. Yeah, exactly. So, but it's probably not a, let's get it off the table right now, because I don't think it is a good use of allocating funds at this point. Okay, but I know what the plan was four, three, four years ago, when the turf field was originally put in. It hasn't been followed. It was never budgeted for. Um.
Yeah, un- unfortunately.
And I don't think that's necessary. Yeah.
And you can make the argument, and, and I understand that argument, but the town has had other issues, I think of, of fire trucks, and where the town has said, we want to set aside money year after year, so that whenever the, the, the item we want to purchase comes due, we have the money. And for reason after reason, excuse after excuse, or just we forget about it or whatever, we never do that. And I would like to see, I prefer seeing a pay-as-you-go, if you will. We know it's an expense. We know it's depreciating at a, at a reasonably fixed amount. That's the way I tend to look at things. If we put it up for a vote, fine.
But, well, I mean, also, think about it, back then, um, we didn't have the fund balance and the health of the fund balance that we have today. So we're in a much different financial position nowadays, whereas to me, if we have the money in the fund balance, one, it looks better and it's not allocated to anything or assigned. Um, then it looks much better to our credit agencies, who, you know, we had a call with a couple of weeks ago, who was very pleased with what they saw on our fund balance side. So, you know, putting, just assigning it when we have, you know, a very healthy fund balance, you know, it doesn't make a difference. There's enough that's, we can cover, or we can, you know, literally write checks for these things. Uh, which is one of the things that I know Rebecca had brought up, you know, during budget season is, you know, some of these things we were talking about bonding for, we wouldn't really need to bond for, we could just write for the ass check. Um, and I would be much more apt to look at it that way, uh, you know, honestly, our pay-as-you-go method is building our fund balance up, which we've done. Um, so we've done that.
Money's been pretty cheap of late, too.
Much, much cheaper than it historically was, for sure.
So the cost of borrowing.
Right, so I mean, I might argue that, you know, leaving that money, being actively invested and pushing it through is a better approach than just keeping the fund balance.
Well, I, I, I do, I am concerned and have always been concerned about the fund balance and our, our potential use. We obviously didn't need to consume it the way we had, had thought we might in the last fiscal year. Uh, and we've obviously put some out this year. So that, that's always a counterbalancing, um, idea for me, which is why a portion of this four twenty being set aside would be more, um, to my liking than, than putting the four twenty. I understand Ron, Ron's arguments. Um, so that's my comments on the field. I, about the field number. I had a number of questions I was going to ask, and, and Donna, you've sort of addressed some of them. Um, in that you, my concern was, um, I wanted to know the, the shortfalls in the budget that you already know about. Um, busing was, with the shortage of drivers was discussed at the Board of Education, um, meeting. Um, the teachers that you've needed to hire, the additional staff in special ed, probably should hold that off to the side, but, um, so my concern was, what was all that stuff going to add up to? Was there other stuff besides that that I've just listed? Um, and how were you going to cover it? Now I hear you're saying you're going to cover it out of, uh, uh, out of the COVID funds, um, which then I was thinking you might cover it out of this, some, some of this seven hundred and fifty thousand. So if you've got it covered a different way, then just putting the seven hundred and fifty thousand in without a, some kind of expected use, um, I, I'd like more information on that. And that really leads me to, to a question I had for Ron and/or Mike, and that is, do we have to take action on this letter tonight? If we wanted, if we needed to get more information about something, or we wanted.
I see, no, there's no reason we have to take, I mean, I don't, that was one of my concerns, too, is if we take the money, put it in a general fund, we can take action on it anytime we want. There's no limits. I mean, you could take it from tomorrow till the last day of the budget year. There's no urgency to do this, except the opportunity that they saw money sitting there. It's the way I looked at it. Um, there's no, no need, until we, and we don't have a plan, we haven't sat down. I would love to sit down with the Board of Ed and get a much deeper involved understanding. And honestly, we're too far out. I mean, if we did this two years ago and tried to predict where we were going to be in six months, we had no idea. There is still a lot of unknowns with the COVID situation, with the education situations. I mean, I've trucked the schools that got shut down for another month or two. I think we've all heard those stories. Uh, we just don't know what we're going to be facing financially, so it just doesn't make sense just to turn over the money just because that's all the money we can give them. I mean, that's a terrible reason to be financing things, because, you know, I see a big pile of money, so I want to take it. I don't like that one bit.
Okay, so, so that, that, your comments are important, I think, because, um, if we had, if, if we lost the opportunity to do this from a time perspective, from a closing the books perspective, from an audit perspective, that would concern me if we.
No, the only difference, the only difference.
Hold on, Mike, hold on a second, because, because Ron's pointing to me, so I.
Yeah, so, so we do have to, we do have to close the books and, uh.
Correct, that's what I was going to say, was the only thing that changes is if we push this off a couple of months, then they would just have to go to town council and Board of Finance to do it, which I think is a good thing. Because that's our process. I think it's healthy to run through the normal course of process of if you need more money on the Board of Ed's education, it's very well spelled out what the process is.
Yeah.
And there's a great process for it.
Yeah, so, so if it goes back to the, um, Undesignated General Fund, it, it would probably require, it'd be a special appropriation at that point. It would, it would require a town meeting, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
It would be much more complicated than us taking action under the section of the statute for which we have the authority to take action.
Yes, it would be more complicated, but our budget process by intent is complicated, because we don't want to cut the voters out. We don't want to cut the town council out. We don't want to cut everybody out of the conversation, and that's all you're doing here. Um, yes, this is a shortcut, and I don't like the fact that it's a shortcut. I actually believe in the referendum. I believe in our process, be it cumbersome. It would be much easier to, yes, have one person who just hands out money. Uh, but that's not our process, and that's not the way the charter reads.
Right, but we, but we do follow the state statutes, and, and we had no prob- we had no problem following the state statute when it was silent on or deferred to us to, to approve what the Board of Ed wanted to do in taking money out.
But it was not for operations. So operations is where you get into the budget. The budget is supposed to cover operations. If you told me you wanted to put, you know, two hundred and fifty grand away because for emergencies capitals, I'd be having that conversation all day long. Um, if you, like, we're going to get to the conversation on special education. I have, I was the one advocating six months ago to start the special education fund, and I'm happy to add more to that, because that makes sense to me. And that's a logical place, and we're all going to be involved in it. This just, for a blank check for operations makes no sense to me. But let's, let's get some other people's opinions, too. Just, it's not just me and you here. So I'm going to ask the John to have a chance to speak, and then Rebecca, Dane, and everybody else. So let's give them a chance, Steve, and then come back. Rebecca, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So Rebecca O'Donnell, um, so I have a couple of comments. So first, I think it's unique, it's a unique outcome, right? So we have a sizable surplus. It's a way better position to be in um, than other areas around our country. Um, so, but my other comments go into the section ten-two forty-eight A. So that section states that expenditures must be for educational purposes. So I could see how allocating money for special ed, we've heard from Joe and the lead, you know, special ed leaders, the ongoing fluidity, the enrollment and the costs associated. So funding that category seems appropriate to me. Now, section ten-two forty-eight B, that mentions noneducational services. So I'm, I'm wondering if that needs to be outlined as such. I, I'm not an expert. I don't know the legal review, but in my world, audit would flag that, so you might want to eliminate any risks there by defining educational versus noneducational. Um, at, at least as far as Donna's letter goes and um, the request for that, I, I wasn't following, um, how a turf field replacement was educational. Um, my other point is, um, the seven hundred and fifty in operation means, um, I, I've heard all the comments. It does read to me like a big wild card, which didn't present well. Um, and to explain that, I think, like you said, every dollar needs a plan. I think everyone's working really hard at tracking everything and reporting everything, and I think that's all necessary effort, but the shortcoming that we continue to see is with the projections and the forecasting. So I guess in my mind, I think about the years where we had, or, you know, the Board of Ed had significant impacts. So yes, you have the pandemic. We've had the special ed increases. We've had, you know, staffing shortages, student population jumps. You know, years ago, we had that change to common core curriculum. You had online curriculum. You have technology, training, resources. Now you have mental health support, wellness campaigns. So like, I think it would be much more wise to have a plan for the dollars, because without it, I'm with you, like, I would question why it shouldn't be held on the town site and rec- and requested through the normal course, since there's currently no future objective for it. So I would just, my comments are really to encourage the Board of Ed to be more intentional with the spending plan to meet the needs of the district. And so that, that's kind of my position on it.
I appreciate that. John?
Hi, Mike. Jonas Sosevsky, yeah, um, when I read the letter, I actually was looking for page two and three and four with backup to support what, what was going to happen with the money. And now knowing about the, the federal reimbursement, it kind of ties together with this. Um, we should look at everything in total, and I see no problem of having this go through the normal channels of having more people and more, more folks, you know, touch the information and make sure it's sound and it holds water, and we have the latest information to react to when, when we do this. Who knows? The seven fifty may be woefully too short for what actually the needs are as we go through the year. And I'd rather address that when we, we have numbers that are solid and we're reacting to the reality of the number of students in, in the town as well as any special ed needs. So, um, I'm comfortable tabling this, knowing that we do have the opportunity to look at it later once we have better numbers and we can, we can fund what actually the shortfall may be from the reality of what we're living with.
Appreciate it. Dane?
Hey, Mike. Uh, Dan Kirk Navy. Um, I would not support the transfers into the ten forty-eight account, uh, primarily due to the, the lack of oversight, um, or control that, that you mentioned. Um, once, once the funds are actually transferred into the account.
Okay, Greg?
Um, I also support just, you know, tabling this, since the budget just was enacted about nine or 10 weeks ago. Uh, it just seemed as though the Board of Ed really missed the, the forecast on what they would require and would need for this budget year. So we need to pull together better information, understand that, and have a better, um, summary of the allocation.
So Mike, this is Steve again, um.
I was just going to come back to you.
One, I'd like to address the five hundred thousand dollar request for the special education.
I was going to hit that next, yeah. So good, you can take it up.
And two, let me first address that, because I've heard two people, two of my fellow board members talk about projections and forecasting. Um, and, and part of this ties to the, to the board directly to the special ed. If you remember back in, at the time of the budget, we were told as we were going through our deliberations that they already knew they were going to be short on special ed. And I, I tried to ask that we put some money back in, that we give them or allow them to keep money that we had reduced from other line items, and people said, no, we don't need to do that, because we have this fund. We can come back later. You will also remember from their presentations that they very clearly stated that enrollment was a risk. They knew it. They didn't put it in because they didn't have their enrollment numbers. So I think we have to be a little bit careful when we say, you know, when we treat this like no projections, no forecast, because there were, whether we chose to.
I don't, don't disagree, Steve. The only point I want to make is we were also told we were going to get monthly reporting on that, and we have not seen that. Um, I don't have a visual into where they're at or where we, you know, and I got to assume, you know, we're a month into school. Some, a lot of the high-dollar kids have to be known at this point.
And, yes, and so, so, so Mike, if, if I can finish.
Um, sure.
That was, I, I had a question. Um, I wanted to know what the current estimate for the special education underfunding, based on enrollment changes since the budget was submitted, um, by the Board of Education in January of, of this year, when they submitted their budget. Um, so if we want to talk about board, uh, about special ed, excuse me, um, that's my first question in terms of dollars. Um, they certainly publish the increase in enrollment during, um, one meeting a month at the Board of Ed. Um, so it, it is out there, although again, I don't dispute your statement about discussing it in detail here. Um, so I would tend, based on what I think I know, and I don't know it all, um, that maybe we put some money aside for special ed because that looks real. And I would like to have, have Joe or Darlene address the special, the special education student growth and the funding.
The only question I have also is, you know, one of the reasons we had such a large surplus last year was a lot of children didn't attend where they thought they were going to attend. So, you know, I don't know. Also, we could have a great estimate right now, and again, if the situation changes, you might lose some of that. So there's definitely a lot of unknowns in special ed. I actually support putting another half million into the account um, for special ed. That I have no issue with. We created it for a good reason. If five hundred was good, a million twice as good, you know what I mean? And it certainly gives a real question um, that I don't think we would wipe out, let's God bless, in one year. Um, so, you know, I have no problem supporting the special ed fund. Um, I would just like to make sure going forward, we're really hitting this on a monthly basis and just giving us that feedback of, hey, I just don't want to be in a situation again in six months from now, then we find out we have a really big problem, like we did the last time. You know, we got to learn from that mistake. Um, I have no problem with the second request. Uh, it was just the ten-two forty-eight that really rubbed me the wrong way, but the special ed, I have completely understandable. I think you're going to have more of this, without a doubt. Um, and again, then we work together to fix it and make sure we get it taken care of. So, just so it remains clear where my position is on that, too.
Can we get input from the other people? Because if the board is, is in favor of the five hundred, I'd be happy to make a motion on that account.
Sure. Go ahead, guys. Rebecca?
Uh, like, like I stated, special ed, to me, that makes an appropriate sense, because we, we've heard through some of the updates from Joe that um, the costs associated, um, have been creeping and services are needed, so, um, I would support the five hundred thousand for special ed.
Good job.
Yeah, hi, Mike. Yeah, I totally agree with that. Special ed is something that I don't think we can put enough money aside for because of all the unknowns. So I'm happy with that.
Okay. Dane?
I would support the 500,000 transferred to the special ed reserve fund. I thought that was a great idea. Was it last year when you first graded that?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, it was last year.
Greg?
Okay.
Yeah, I support the 500,000, you know, for special ed. Would like to know, yep, just a little more detail, I guess, you know, for.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, again, I think, I know that you're finalizing. I talked to Ron about this this morning, you know, and I want everybody to be clear. Ron's been nothing but super transparent on everything he shares with us. I know they are just getting the numbers put together. I know the enrollments are up. And we all know the enrollments are up. So I think this makes a lot of sense. And I think we should just set up a meeting maybe a month from now, that we only focus on special ed because it's that important. And maybe we invite them back and give them a month to put it all together instead of putting them under the gun here when they might not have, well, they have 75% of the numbers. Steve, if you want to make that motion, I'm happy to support it. And I think that's a great way to approach it. And if everybody thinks it makes sense to have them come back in a month, when we really can dedicate hours to this only, I, I would support that.
Yeah, I'd rather not have to revisit it every month trying to, you know, it's a Band-Aid approach, but just fully understand it.
Okay, I'll make a motion, Mike. I move that the Board of Finance take 500,000 from the $2,013,529 in excess Board of Education funds and put that money in the Special Education Reserve Fund.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. John?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Terrific. Excellent. Thank you, Steve.
So now, what do we do with the remaining funds? We have to take?
We don't take any action. I don't believe. No, I don't think we take any action.
Remainder goes just into the general fund.
Ron, you want to clarify that? But I'm pretty sure it all goes back to the general fund if we don't take action.
If, if you don't take action on any of that, it will just, the, the 500,000 transfer will get transferred to the capital, to the reserve fund for special ed and the balance will.
Any general?
Unassigned general fund.
And how do we, Mike, well, question here. So how do we make it known that we will be prepared to revisit the needs through the normal order?
I mean, I get the feeling the Board of Ed won't let us forget it, hearing this conversation. I think we could trust Joe and Ron to remind us, you know, I would, what I would recommend honestly is, you know, next month, we talk special ed and maybe the following month when we've got, or, you know, we've got another couple of months, again, we should have a much more solid feel where we're at. Does that make sense, Joe and Ron? Just to?
That's fine. Whenever, whatever you want to do it, you know, we'll be ready. October 1 is, is the, one of the two official days of student enrollment. So we'll have a pretty good sense of where we are with total enrollment. And Darlene, I know she can give you an update now, but, you know, if you want, we prepare something a little bit more and you can limpa on exactly what you want to see. You know, we know that.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my recommendation is to really get a full in deep dive into this because it's something we haven't done outside of the budget ever, as far as I'm concerned. And, you know, it's probably six months since we would have talked about special ed. So I would love to do the deep dive if everybody else isn't agreeing.
Well, if Darlene came prepared to discuss, and I don't know whether she intended to discuss it under the normal Board of Ed items under, under item eight tonight, but, but I would like to know what information they prepared and have, if any, on, on special ed.
Yep. Darlene can walk you through the enrollment numbers. And I know, you know, I know she has a projected, you know, deficit number right now. But yeah, that, we all know that could change. And it is early. It's very early in this, in the session. So Dar, I don't know if you want to give them the enrollment update first?
Yeah. So I don't know if I can, I don't think I can bring it up on my screen. I did, I did prepare a chart for the Board of Ed that, that just shows, you already know we had increased enrollment. And my chart shows where we started in, can you get it?
Hold on, hold on a second, Darlene. I can, I can let you share your screen. Hold on.
Oh, then I have to figure out how to do it.
What's that?
Then I have to figure out how to do it.
You're putting her under pressure, under pressure now.
Here's an embarrassing thing. If you give it to me, I can, I can pull up your enrollment numbers, Darlene. But I got them horizontal and I can't.
She's got it.
Okay. Good, because I can buy it or rotate it. It will rotate without me buying it.
I've got that, but how do I get my, what I brought up?
Yep. Right down there.
Yeah, but it's not there. Where is my? Here it is. Here it is. Can you see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, so this is a chart that I created for the Board of Education meeting. As you know, we did have a big increase in students enrollment this year. So if you look on the left-hand side, just if we take the top part, starting, starting our school year, last year in June, we had 468 students. We had 33 graduate. And then we had some that registered in the summer. We started our school year with 437. And then if you look at the right side, now this is, these are just special ed kids, students with IEPs. So then if you look at the right side of this chart, we, we graduated 30 students. Well, we ended June at 507. So we had increased enrollment at the end of the year. Then we graduated 30 students. We had 31 students move in with IEPs. So we are starting our school year with 496 students. And we, today, we looked up the number and we had two more students referred and eligible that were at now 498. So we're, we're keep creeping up to that 500. And as some of you may or may not know, when we have students who move into district, the IEP is a legal document. We are bound to implement that IEP, no matter what, you know, what is on it. So we have, we can come back to a 30-day review after the student attends our district and we, and we can make changes at that time. But when a student comes in, we have to, we have to implement that IEP. So, so when we have that many students move into our district, it becomes difficult to meet their servicing. We have, we have, you know, number one, our, the reason I'm asking for a special ed teacher is our caseloads are getting so big for our special education teachers, that when they, they try to meet the needs of a student, it become, it doesn't become, you know, it's not effective anymore, when you have so many students on your caseload. And it's especially important at the high school level, where they have those kids on their caseload, they each have seven different teachers that the program managers have to be in contact with. So, so that was an ask that I made at the last Board of Education meeting. Also, related service, my related service staff, we have all of these moving in who may have speech and language on their IEPs, or occupational therapy on their IEPs, physical therapy on their IEPs. I have a limited number of people in the district that can do this. So one of the things that I'm, I'm, I'm looking to do is to increase my speech and language pathologist by point four. We have some that are not full-time. I would like to make one full-time and then have one pick up an extra day to help alleviate some of this. And not even to alleviate the pressure, to be able to meet the hours on the IEP. Last year, I had to, I had to hire an agency to service one of my students who had a significant amount of speech and language on the IEP. And then also, when students move in, they may have adult support on their IEP. We've had several students move in with that already on their IEP. And we, and we don't have the adult staff. So I am, I am also looking at some, an increase in parent educators. So all of this wraps up into, and then we have the program changes that happened over the summer. We did bring kids back to district. We brought our kids back to district. But then we had some significant program changes. You've heard me say before that special ed is evolved daily. It's, you know, I can give you a number today, and then tomorrow it will be different. So, but we have, right now, I'm looking at about $400,000 that we did not, we did not budget for when we budgeted.
And I, I think, you know, looking at this, you know, the numbers that really jump out at me in terms of the enrollment is, you know, you look at last year, that 468 went down to 435. And then, you know, as the year went on, we added, you know, 70, it looks like 72 kids. And then this year, to go from 507, and then to have, you know, to graduate 30, and then to replace them right to 30, we're almost, we're almost starting off this year, where we ended last year, where most other years, we're starting the year with about 30 less kids or so. But this year, with the number of kids that came in, we're pretty close to picking up where we, where we left off in June.
So it's about a 7, 8% increase in students, is our correct, going in?
I believe so, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Thought it might be worse, to be honest with you. All right. Are you guys good to go to depth? Because we can look some numbers and that kind of stuff in a month?
Yeah. I think it'd be good, you know, let us know exactly what we can prepare and.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll prepare.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. I know it's a challenge and it's not easy thing to keep track of. So we understand the challenges, but we just want to be in the loop is all. Okay.
Tell me how to.
We're good to, helpful. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. You want to move on to the next transfer, Steve?
I, new, new business item 6C, a proposed FY21 budget transfer. I will now read the following resolution and ask for its adoption. Resolve the following budget transfers be approved pursuant to Chapter 8, Section 7G of the Town Charter for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. $5,642.81 from Human Resources Insurance and $5,642.81 to the Town Clerk Land Records.
Look, you have a second?
A second, you have?
Second. Any discussion? Ron, you want to speak to this at all?
Actually, Ken was going to speak. I can touch on it real quick.
Thanks, Ken.
So in the, in the Town Clerk's office, you know, there's routing expenses that are incurred relative to land record activity. That department went over budget by the 5642 amount purely due to, you know, a real explosion in volume. The revenue that the Town Clerk receives in fees relative to those land records, far, far and away, well exceeds this, this amount. So it's, it's directly related to increased activity. Unfortunately, you know, the way municipal budgeting works, and Ron can, can go into this deeper if you want, we cannot apply that excess revenue directly to this line item. So that's why the, the request to simply transfer it from HR Insurance, which, as we discussed earlier, has plenty of room in it. But the, the overage in Town Clerk Land Record revenue, I think, was a six-figure number.
Town Clerk revenue overall is an increase of $457,000.
Right.
Wow.
Jesus, great. Yeah. So, no, I don't think we're going to worry about 5,600. So.
So I just want to be clear that the, the need for the transfer is really more of an accounting issue and not, not reflected above that office at all, you know.
No problem. All right. Any other further discussion? All right, hearing none. John?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Great. Thank you. All right. Well, next, new business, person change in policy to update capital asset capitalization threshold beginning in 2021.
So somebody want to talk to this?
Exactly. Ron, you want to talk to this one?
Yeah. So this was at the recommendation of the auditors, and it's purely for financial disclosure purposes in the Capper. And it's just increasing the capitalization thresholds for, you know, a couple of the classes of assets. That's, that's pretty much it. And, you know, before, we were $5,000 for every class of assets. And again, for infrastructure, their suggestion was increasing it to 100,000 for improvements and 20,000. And then for, I think, to keep equipment, you know, we lumped vehicles in with equipment to keep that at 5,000. Construction in progress, depending on whether it's a vehicle build or a, a project, it, you know, the capitalization threshold would be different. So that's why there's a range there. That's pretty much it.
Well, one question, Mike, to Ron. What is the definition of infrastructure here? When I look at building improvements and, and things like that, I think of that potentially as infrastructure.
Getting into the detail, I think it's all the, the roads.
All roads, okay.
That's the bulk of it.
That's infrastructure. Okay.
Okay. Do we have to, is this just a policy change? Do we have to make the motion? Or do we have to do what?
I think, I think we need a motion.
I think, I think a motion would.
Makes sense. Good. Let's do it. We have our, we have an expert.
I move that we accept the auditor's recommendation for the change to the capitalization threshold as presented and that the material be included in the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. John?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Excellent. All right. Next is review of the 2022 financial reports. Anything you want to call out, Ron, on the general fund budget report?
Yeah, you know, at this point, Mike, not, not really. I think, you know, on the town, yeah, on the town side, we're, if you don't mind, do you mind me collapsing A and B at this moment?
I do not. I would prefer.
Okay. So, so on the town side, not, not really. On the board side, as, as we discussed there, and Joe will get into it a little more, that, you know, there's, and it's not really reflected in the report yet, but some areas of concern, transportation for athletics is, is one area of concern. We are, you know, special ed, I think we've already addressed, so there's no need to go there. So, you know, at this point, it's, we're just out of the gate. There's not a lot to talk about. Are there areas of concern? Sure. But once we get some clarity, we'll be able to say more.
All right, tax collector?
Hello, Mike and for the finance. Our numbers are continually improving. We are up a percentage from last year, which is very promising. And we sent out reminder notices and got very response this month. So you'll see the numbers even higher this coming month, which you'll see next month. I don't think there's any concern. Everything looks like it's coming in and looks great.
Excellent. Thank you.
Deb, I'm assuming that all the financial institutions that pay the end of July have essentially paid based on these percentages?
Yes, everybody. Yeah, that's why we're at 50%. Most people don't pay extra on their, they're a little bit more than 50% for the real estate. But most people don't pay the real estate in full. And the institutions definitely don't. With the motor vehicle, because we're slightly higher, the lease car people do pay the taxes in full. So that why that number is slightly higher than 50%. And a lot of people do pay their car taxes in full. I think right now, we are almost at. I think right now, we are almost at to, I think we surpassed 70% for this, you know, so far this month. And personal property is the same thing. We are, you know, we get the taxes in for that, but a lot of the personal property don't pay the taxes in full, especially the larger ones like First Light and all the larger companies, you know, businesses.
Thank you.
Yep. Treasurer?
So Mike, Patrick's, Patrick is out of town currently.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so, you know, the treasurer's report in here is, it's basically just a snapshot of the cash accounts as of 8/31. So, you know.
Nothing terribly exciting.
Nothing terribly exciting. You could see the, you know, he's, we've got the 16 million invested in CDs as of the end of August. So Patrick, Patrick's been working hard to find yield. He's been doing a good job.
All right. Anything in the fund activity statements? I know you covered all that.
Yeah, I pretty much covered that. There's nothing exciting at this point yet.
Okay. Joe, anything else you want to touch on before calling it night?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things, Mike. Ron, Ron touched on it already. Clearly, one area that we're keeping an eye on, transportation. Not a Monroe issue. It's not even a Connecticut issue. It's, you know, Massachusetts called in the National Guard to transport kids to, to school and. You know, we're fortunate so far in the fact that All-Star has been able to cover our runs. So we haven't had that issue. And, and, you know, there's a lot of poaching going around in the state where some districts are losing their drivers, especially in some of the urban areas where they don't pay as well to some of the more affluent suburbs. We've been, we've been fortunate where we didn't, we have enough to cover, but they usually carry about eight extra drivers to do our charters, mostly, you know, for, you know, athletics. Just to give you, just to give you some ideas of some of the things we've had to do. So we have moved some games back. We've moved some games to the weekends, times when our, our All-Star drivers will be free to drive us. But, you know, we can't do that all the time. And just to give you a kind of a sense of some of the prices that we're paying when we have, when we run into these things. So the Jockey Hollow cross-country team had two, two meets. If we had used All-Star, it would have cost about 550 bucks for both trips. We had to, we had to use another service, cost us $1,990 for the two trips. So it was more than, you know, the transportation budget for the middle school cross-country team was $1,300. We blew that and, and, and more on two, two trips. Yeah. You know, same thing. We took one bus to a soccer game, you know, not using All-Star because they didn't have anything available, $795. Two All-Star buses to Danbury for the football team for a scrimmage, which they took longer, they were there longer, cost 795 for $2. So three, you know, I'm sorry, 795 for two buses. So almost half the price of these other buses. So, you know, it's early, you know, conservatively, you know, I know athletics is afraid, you know, they might, you know, see an overage of up to, you know, 25% increase in transportation costs for the fall season. You know, we'll see, there is a little, you know, relief in sight. We did talk to, you know, the management over at All-Star. Fortunately, they do have, you know, three drivers in the queue to come, come onboard. It's not as easy as just, you know, signing up and, and driving though. There's a, there's a huge onboarding process. So it won't be until probably October, November for those three to get onboard. And hopefully, you know, that'll help a little bit with the charters and whatnot. So, I mean, they're running on a shoestring, but they're covering it for us. The other big thing, and I know we've, we've kind of, you know, we've talked about it. I know we've talked about the increased enrollment, you know. Listen, I'm in a, I'm in a position where I just want to, I just want to cover our, you know, make sure that we can, I could, we can cover the expenses we have right now and take care of the needs that we have right now. So I know we'll probably talk more about this. I know you guys want some more detail on the, on the grant funding. But there's two, you know, the two big grants that have come our way. The Esser 2 grant was about $512,000. And then the most recent ARP Esser, which is like the Esser 3 grant, was $1.1 million. So between those two grants, and I know you guys were referencing that earlier, about $1.6 million. You know, because of increased enrollment, because of the increases in special ed, the demand on services. Yeah, I know I talked about the elementary numbers with you folks before. You know, we, we had to add, you know, a number of staff, a couple of kindergarten teachers, a couple of third grade teachers. You know, we brought our math coordinator back, you know, using the Esser 2 grant. So I have all that outlined and I could share that and if you want it in more detail, you know, something outlined for you. I can do that. But, you know, my concern is the same concern the Board of Ed had that Donna talked about a little bit before, and it's the same concern that you have. You know, I'm worried about, you know, taking care of the immediate needs, but I also realize by doing so, we're building, we're building a fiscal cliff. I mean, we're, we're sick of, you know, of talking about it, but, you know, it's the reality. But I got to deal with the, with the immediate pressing needs. And, you know, if money can come from anywhere, I, you know, I've been kind of earmarking the grant as places to do that because I didn't know where else, where else it would come from. And it's, it's a pressing need. It's not what the, it's not what the grant was intended for. You know, we have some, you know, cool things we'd like to actually do with the grant. But, you know, we got to take care of the most pressing things first. We'd love to have, you know, a really robust targeted tutoring program. We'd love to offer some extended day programming for, you know, kids that really need it. You know, some other work with Teachers College, which has done some great work for early literacy at the elementary levels. But, you know, this is taking precedence right now. So one way or another, we have to pay for it. And I don't, you know, I'm more than happy to sit and, you know, have you guys look at that further with us.
Okay, would love to.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Joe.
Mike, can we, can we get that list and have that actually put on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss their needs for things that are not in the budget, not programmed for? You know, would be enrichment or whatever you want, whatever the right terminology is. I'd like to see a discussion of that next month.
I would agree. Good.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, one, one other thing we could note on that grant, it's not a, I think ARP Esser is what, a two-year grant, Joe?
Yeah, two years.
Yeah, I think it needs to, and I think this is the question we still have is, I think it needs to be encumbered by September of '24. So technically, we have this year, next year, and then possibly. Is it, is it, can you encumber the money and own it for that year of '23, '24? Or does it need to be expected by September of '24? And that, that's a question.
Got it. All right, yeah, if we can bring those details, that'd be great. Perfect. All right. Somebody got anything else? Want to make the motion?
Steve Kirsch moved to adjourn.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.